Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth, invited guests, family and friends. Also, I want to acknowledge my colleagues on council and our city manager, Mr. Carter, our city attorney, Attorney Graham Williams, and also our city clerk, Ms. Deborah White. Thank you all for being here today. I would ask that all of my colleagues please note your attendance electronically.
Six members of City Council are present.
Thank you, ma'am. And now we will turn over the meeting to our city manager. Mr. Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, all of my colleagues to my left, and all the audience here. Thank you for being with us this afternoon. We have three items that we want to present tonight. Unfortunately, we're going to shake up the lineup just a little bit. Have a request that we move the discussion around retirement to the head of the line. So I'm going to ask Mr. Trey Burke if he'd come forth. He's going to be the leader for this particular portion of the discussions tonight. So, Mr. Burke, you have the floor. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Glover, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council. Tonight I am following up on a request from the July 23 City Council meeting to present and discuss the Portsmouth Pension Retiree Supplements. The presentation will provide a brief overview of the city's retirement plans and benefits, the regulations around the city's legacy pensions, the difference between the health reimbursement agreement and the supplement, beneficiary compensation, the impact of one-time supplements on the funding status of the system, the actuarially defined, excuse me, the actuarial determined contribution, and finally, recommendations. It is our hope that the information provided will be helpful in determining a way forward. The city currently maintains four pension systems: the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System, the Fire and Police Retirement System, the Virginia Retirement System, or VRS, Plans One and Two, and the VRS Hybrid Plan. The PSRS and FPRS are city-administered defined benefit plans that were available to general employees hired before 1984 and fire and police employees before 2005. VRS Plans One and Two are defined benefit plans that were made available to participants in the city-administered plans. The VRS Hybrid Plan is a blended defined contribution and benefit plan and is the only retirement plan available to current or new hirees. The presentation this evening will focus on the supplemental retirement system and the fire and police retirement system. We will discuss certain benefits as they relate to the discussion this evening. It is not meant to be a comprehensive overview and does not mean every beneficiary receives all benefits. Base compensation is paid to beneficiaries who were enrolled in a retirement system. Compensation is set by formula factoring pay, years of service, and age. Changes to base compensation are permanent and will be paid for on an annual basis. Health reimbursement arrangement is an employer-funded group health plan from which employees are reimbursed tax-free for qualified medical expenses up to a fixed dollar amount every year. Unused amounts may be rolled over. Supplements, finally, are payments made to retirees. While these can be made outside the pension system, the benefit may need to be factored into annual payments. Retiree benefits are covered by Chapter 30 of the city code. The closed systems are regulated very similarly but in separate sections of the chapter. It is important to note that Chapter 30 reads, "In no event shall City Council approve or authorize adjustments to retirement allowances unless the supplemental retirement, or FMPRS, is funded at no less than 80% of the actuarial reported liability." Annual changes to pension retiree compensation and city-administered pension retiree benefits are covered by the Pay and Classification Plan, and they are adopted as part of the annual This discussion has centered, will center on two specific benefits: the health reimbursement arrangement and one-time supplement adjustments. The health reimbursement arrangement is paid for by the city out of the retirement fund. Portsmouth provides $1,400 per enrolled beneficiary at a total annual budget of $500,000. Quote-unquote "one-time" supplements have been provided to retirees from time to time and are usually a lump sum payment made to beneficiaries. In the past, these lump sums have been a percentage of total benefits, and in more recent years, there's been a benefit at a fixed-per-employee amount, say $1,000 or $1,500 per employee. The chart on the screen compares annual pension compensation growth to the Consumer Price Index. The data show that pension dispersments have not kept place with price inflation. However, the chart does not factor in base compensation and thus should not be confused for income levels of retirees. I should also point out that the graph does not include one-time payments, except for years in the late 90s, which were made as a percentage and made permanent in 2001. Note the substantial increase in 2013, which represents the Social Security offset implemented as part of the pension obligation bond issuance. The chart on the left of the slide shows the value of dispersments made and the relative value of dispersment had they been invested in the pension system. Assuming compound returns matching national averages as reported by the U.S. Department of Labor, the 7.2 million provided to employees from 1997 to 202024 would have a value of $16.3 million today. The chart on the right side of the slide showed that if money had been invested in the closed retirement systems, the investment, excuse me, the investment of funds could have improved the system funding level from 69% to 75%. If the city provides payment to pension retirees, that will increase the overall system liability, and as such, the recurring payment will be steadily higher in the future. The cost of a $1,500 supplement will grow from $1.54 million to $1.65 million by 2023. Much like city staff will always submit a balanced budget, we will always propose pension contributions that meet funding thresholds of 80%, no later than 2033, and 100%, no later than 2037. This projection meets those standards. City staff is recommending a discretionary supplement that will be considered in budget years going forward. This year, the amount will be $1,500 per employee, excuse me, per retiree, to be funded with fund balance. In future years, as will be discussed on the following slide, the supplement will be paid for with recurring revenues. If adopted, city staff will presume that retiree supplements are a priority of council and budget decisions to accommodate the supplement may result in reduced services, compensation, and hinder the city's ability to reduce tax rates. With that in mind, we recommend continuing with the one-time nature of dispersment and not amending the base allowance provided to retirees. Also know that the future funding level will factor in the actuary-determined contribution, and so a drop in the system's funding level may necessitate a reduced supplement. Drops in the funding level are typically caused by stock market downturns. Please see the discretionary supplement schedule on the slide shown. Staff recommends providing a $1,500 supplement in FY 2025, $1,250 in FY 2026, and $1,000 in fiscal year 2027, all subject to funding availability. This concludes the prepared portion of my presentation. As always, I appreciate your attention on this matter.
Sir, you have the floor.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a question. You said that reduce services if we was to adopt this on a year-by-year basis. Which, which services would be reduced or would we be looking at?
I could not tell you at this point. It would basically depend on the cost of the one-time supplement, of the discretionary supplement.
Would that come in this year? Well, if you have it right?
Not in fiscal year 2025. We're going to use fund balance.
Okay.
That's the proposal, anyway.
Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation, Trey. I didn't almost recognize you there when you came in. The supplement, also known as the stipend, what fund does that come out of?
It is a transfer from the general fund.
Right. But you also said that's tied to the fulfillment in the pension fund of 80%?
Yes, sir. We make an actuary-determined contribution out of the general fund and for the supplemental. There are a couple in other grant funds.
See, it, see, that's, that's the part I, if it's funded out of the general fund, I don't, I don't see that tie-in to the pension fund. And, and I think initially, some of us were here when we started that, I, I think the Vice Mayor was, and maybe Mayor Glover, if I'm missing anybody, I, I don't think anybody else was here. But when that was set up, I don't, the, the 80% came after the, the first stipend. So I, I don't see the, I just don't see the tie-in. If it's coming out of the general fund, leave it at that and let council decide whether it's going to be a budgetary item or not. And the HRA, is that, what funds that come out of?
The HRA comes out of the, the health insurance fund.
Okay. So, so that's, that doesn't come out of the pension fund either? Is that correct?
So I can clarify one thing, if I may. The manager wanted to make a point, I believe. So, there's a transfer from the general fund to the retirement fund.
What, what, why is that? Okay, the different buckets of funds, and the pension fund, in addition to the city's contribution, that growth or lack of growth is predicated on, on the market? Is that correct?
And contributions from the city.
That, that's what I said.
Yes, sir.
Two things.
Yeah.
So, backing up again, I don't, I don't, I just don't see the tie-in with, with the 80% in the pension fund. Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, okay.
Maybe someone can help me understand why that tie-in should be there, because I certainly don't get it at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. And City Manager Carter would like to have the floor at this time. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you. One of the things we have to make sure we understand about the way the budget works is most of the things that happen around here is funded from that general fund. Now, we take money and put it in different funds to allocate it, but the money starts in the general fund. So just like the, the reason this is tied to that 80%, because we make a transfer from the general fund to the pension fund to keep that things at the point where it needs to be. If at some point, the, the market doesn't have a great year and it goes way down, that means we have to put, transfer more out of the general fund into the pension fund. That means if we transfer more into the pension fund just to keep the pension fund sustainable, we have less to allocate to this particular item. Okay?
I get that. But the same can be said to other allocations.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. And remember-
And that's, that's, that's my point. There's no direct tie-in. We, we, we know if, if the market has a terrible year, the city has to contribute more to the pension fund. But when the market is up tremendously, we don't have to contribute as much. But I, I just think we're comparing apples and grapes when you're talking about the, the stipend and the HRA. I mean, that's, that's me, that's my thought process on it. And I don't think nothing can convince me otherwise, because we're not dipping into the pension fund on either of those, the, the stipend or the HRA. We're not taking money out. But we're saying because the city's got to make a contribution to the pension fund, if, if the stipend and the HRA didn't exist, the city would still have to make a contribution at times to the pension fund. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
I rest my case.
Okay. Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
All right. One last comment. One of the things that Councilman Barnes asked was, hey, well, what item were we talking about that may be reduced? And the reply was, we can't tell you that today, because we're going to use fund balance today. But as we start budgeting, we have a finite amount of money to budget with. And if this is going to be something that we're going to decide as a body we're going to do every year, then that becomes one of the things that we have to put inside that budget, which means if, if I got a finite amount of money and I put something brand-new in, something ends got to come out. All right? So that's, that's, that's what we mean about what we're talking about today. There, this, this decision that we make today has an impact on future budgets. Okay? All right. That's it. Thank you.
And if I could add just my thought, and maybe someone can correct me, Mr. Burke, part of the policy that was created by council for the 80% was to ensure that, in the best-case scenario, that the funds that needed to keep the retirement solvent and stable at that level would always first go there. That was part of the rationale for that policy.
Yes, sir. Though, if you go back to the late 2000s, there was a, at that point, the funding level had gotten down to 28 and 32%.
Correct.
And so the city's been playing catch-up, partly with the pension obligation bonds and partly, you know, having kind of a higher standard. So there's a goal that says we will have 80% by 2033 and 100% by 2037. And that was one of the recommendations that came out of that committee in the late 2000s. Okay.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor. And then Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, I, I see you, ma'am. It's just the placing is different. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, to that point, how did the pension fund get to 28%?
That would take a long thing. I think the simple part is that the increases were not fully funded as they were given at the time.
Did the retirees do anything wrong?
No.
Okay. So, so that's a point. Retirees didn't do anything wrong to put us in this predicament. Can you go back to Slide 6, please, which is the annual pension compensation graph? Okay, so the retirees didn't do anything wrong to put us in this predicament, but here's the story that the retirees are feeling now that they're retired. The dotted line is going up and the blue line is staying flat. And it's all staying flat because we want to make sure with the policy that we preserve enough money in the pension fund to be able to pay at the current rate that blue line until the last retiree that's in the system passes away. So, I think to Councilman Moody's point, there's a gap. And it ain't the retirees' fault that there's a gap. And so the question, I think, that we need to wrestle with is, do we care about the retirees, the people that served the city, or do we not care about them? And if we don't care about them, then the blue line's just fine. And if the, if in fact, we think we ought to do something to provide some relief, particularly for the retirees who are completely dependent on, on Social Security and this retirement income, then the stipend that we have been band-aiding this problem with since, I don't know, 2016, I guess, is when the line went flat. So we've, I don't know how many years we've done stipends. You guys have been around longer than me, but as far back as I can remember, we have usually around Christmas time, as I recall. One of the, one of the city councilmen makes a motion to provide our legacy retirees with stipends, referred to as the Christmas present to the retirees. So when this whole discussion came up a year ago, I looked at it and said, okay, I don't like doing budgets this way. We, we, we built the budget, it didn't include a stipend, and now we're after the fact. We got some money available in the general fund, and so we're going to give a, something that feels like a gift, when in fact, I don't think this is about gift-giving, this is about taking care of our retirees. So, so the discussion we had at the last council meeting around this whole issue, I think, was about, it's time for us to deal with this once and for all. Do we want to deal with this with a general fund stipend on a regular basis? And I get it that, that we can't predict the market, we can't predict how much general fund money we're going to have, but we can do that come budget time. And so when, when this coming year, when it's time to build the budget, we can sit and talk about, hey, does this budget require us cutting paving roads in the city in order to fund this stipend? Does it require us to cut sewer service to, to fund this stipend? Does it require us to, to scrimp on some other service in order to fund the stipend? And if the answer's yes, then, then maybe the stipend is smaller. And if the answer is no, there's $1,500 per retiree available in the general fund as part of this budget, and we build it into the budget from the very beginning, then all of us know in the budget process, $1,500 in there, we're not going to talk about it anymore, it's in there, and so, so we'll stop having this conversation after the fact, which was what I thought we were doing during the budget build this past year. Now, you say that the $1,400 HRA is in the budget. It wasn't in the budget before this year. Last year, we added it after the fact. Isn't that true? I'm pretty sure we did. And so we added the HRA after the fact, and this year, during budget build, when we sat and talked about budget, I pushed pretty hard, hey, let's not, let's not install Band-Aids, the HRA needs to be in there, the, the stipend needs to be in there, because year over year over year, going back to whenever this flat line started, we've been, the city council has been adding stipends to, to kind of fill the gap. That's all I want to do, is fix this once and for all during the budget process, and we can decide year over year, can we afford $1,500? Can we afford $1,000? Can we afford $2,000? I don't know what we're going to be able to afford. The retirees seem to be pretty happy if we're able to afford $1,500, which is where the number came from. They gave us the number and said, if you guys could help us out with that, then the poorest of the retirees are really the ones that, that are benefiting from that money. And so, seems like that's a decent starting place for the fiscal '26 budget. Let's bake in from the general fund stipend, and year over year, let's agree that, that we're going to do that as part of the budget process and not be faced a year from now with a new city council having to have all of this stuff explained to whoever the new people are that are on city council, and then we got to go through the same stork dance all over again. So, so my suggestion is, let's deal with the $1,500 stipend now for this year, and let's commit as a council to going forward, working with the city manager and with our budget director. Year over year, let's build in on the front end what the, the legacy retiree stipend is going to be, and that way, we all know that we're going to be able to afford it, because it's built into the approved budget when we finally slap the table and say, that's our budget for the year.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. And Mr. Burke, thank you for the presentation. Councilman Hugo pretty much stole my thunder on this, because I believe that when these retirees were placed into this retirement program, they were told that either you can stay in this program or you can move to the VRS. And I think the city failed them at that point, because the VRS had all of the support, had all of the funding, had all of the staff oversight to be able to ensure that retirees got the funding that they needed annually, but this legacy system did not. So I think that when they dropped the ball, is, they should have told everyone, hey, this is the new program, everyone is going to be committed to this one, because we're not going to manage this one. So these retirees were under the impression that they would continue to be serviced by someone, the city, and I don't think it's fair for us to have to come back every year and, as we say, put Band-Aids on, have a discussion every year, change the amount, readjust the people, and, and all of that. I think that the retirees who served our city then deserved to be rewarded with the pension that we can afford to provide to them now. The ask is $1,500. That's what I would like to stand by, whatever we need to work through to, to ensure that this is the ongoing amount for those retirees who we told would be taken care of if they stayed in the legacy retirement system or if they went to the new VRS system. So I will be in favor of moving us forward with the $1,500 for retirees.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Tillage, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Hugo pretty much, you know, summed up everything I had to say. I think this ultimately comes down to council priorities and what council finds to be important. And I do believe that taking care of our retirees is very important, especially when we're dealing with the old retirement system versus VRS. I mean, ultimately, listening to Mr. Burke, it was not the retirees' fault that this has occurred. It's been the city's neglect of investing funds throughout the years to contribute to this. And looking at this chart, I mean, they've been flat since 2013. You're looking at 12 years going on, excuse me, 11 years going on 12 years almost, of the same rate while inflation is at an all-time high. I think that's the least we can do. I think, looking at our budget, I'm sure there are areas in which the city has wasted money in budgets, and I'm sure we can easily find ways to reallocate money in future years that are not going to hinder any services that the city of Portsmouth provides, but instead appropriately and accurately allocate funds to support our retirees. So, thank you.
Mr. Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not against this at all, and reason being, at first I was listening and he said, Trey said about cutting certain services. However, I realize that we invest a lot of money into a bunch of organizations and things that don't deal with our city, and we invest money into them to help other people. So I think we can make those cuts into those organizations and invest that back into our retirees. I, I've been consistent in saying that any money that we have should go back into helping Portsmouth people. So I think that we definitely can find that, that million, that consistent million by taking away from the organizations and different businesses that we invest into yearly, and we can give that back to Portsmouth citizens, Portsmouth employees that help our city progress. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Moody, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the important thing also to remember that the multiplier on whatever we fund, that number is decreasing, because both of those systems are closed, and, you know, the people in the system will be passing on, and that, that will be a decreasing number as the years go by. But absolutely should be in the budget and not tied to the pension plan.
Thank you, sir. And one last comment. Can you clarify, when, when, when the folks that were in the supplemental and the Police and Fire Retirement System, when VRS became available, did those individuals have a choice to move to VRS or not move to VRS? And the reason why I'm asking the question, I think it's important for people to understand from a historical standpoint what happened with that. I'm not in disagreement with what my colleagues are saying. I'm not in disagreement with what my colleagues are saying, but when, when we, when we put the picture together, there has to be a full picture. And we, we as elected leaders are put in this position to do certainly what's best in the interest of all of our citizens, and we have other retirees who may not have benefited from this type of retirement. The, the, the reason why I asked the question is because there, there has been some comments that suggested it might have been different. I just need to understand, was it different? Did the retirees have a chance to move into the VRS system once the change took over? Or do you know?
I think it's probably best to get back to the specifics on, on what that choice was and when it was.
Okay. Do, do you know the answer, Mr. Moody?
I don't know if anybody knows exactly what happened. I, I was there when all this was discussed. I'm told at the time that there were meetings with city employees, and those meetings were conducted by Department Heds. And what was said is up for debate. Some feel that I, I've heard that it wasn't presented like it should have been. Some of the employees were told, suggested that, you know, you need to go one way or the other. So, if you can, if you can find any factual information, nobody that I know has been able to come up with a brochure, an agenda, amendments to that meeting, and they were meetings apparently. So, there to your question, I think, I don't know that we'll be able to nail down exactly what was presented at that time.
Well, well, first of all, I think that's appropriate, and so, we're gonna move forward with this matter in the regular session, and we'll take the vote at that time. I just wanted to know from a historical standpoint, I think it's good for the citizens to know in full transparency, so you can bring that information back if you would. I think it'll be helpful for us to know, but that doesn't need to slow down the decision-making process. So thank you, Mr. Burke, if you don't have anything further.
Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, the city attorney would like the floor then. Vice mayor, then Mr. Moody.
Okay, just to be sure that we're on the same page there, this is not on the agenda for today. This is just informational, report back for you all to consider when budgeting happens, developments in the late, late in this year and, and next year. So there is no item on the agenda to vote on today.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor.
Okay, that was my question. I was wondering if we needed to add an item to the agenda, but, no.
No.
No, okay. Thank you.
Yes, because it's financial in nature, we have to have the full council in order to do that, so that will prevent us from adding that agenda item to, adding that agenda item today.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, I understand that, mayor, but don't we need a consensus to go forward when we do have a full council? Because we're talking about either yea or nay on the $1,500 now, so we don't, this is our last meeting this month, so we going into September, so shouldn't we have a consensus on whether we want to consider that on the September agenda?
Yes, Mr. Moody, if you would like to call for a consensus to add that item to be considered on the agenda for our first meeting in September, assuming we will have everyone in attendance, I think that is absolutely in order, sir.
Okay, I'll call for that consensus that the mayor just explained.
So, Mr. Moody has called for a consensus, can we show that consensus by vote with hands? Thank you, sir.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
And Mr. Mayor, so we, just to be clear, the consensus was for bringing this to our September agenda with the idea of, of financing the $1,500 stipend for one more year, but we also discussed making this a budget issue year over year. Can we include that issue in the same agenda item so that, that in, in future budgets, we're considering this upfront and not after the fact?
Madam City Attorney, would you like to address that?
It, it's not preferred, but we can. You can always amend the budget as you see fit, or add to the budget as you see fit, so you can take it up as a desire of council, to voice what the desire of council is. We'll probably separate them and not put them together, but that is a possibility, yes.
Can I call for a consensus that we, we add that also to the September agenda?
Yes, you can, sir.
Okay.
So we, we have a-
So-called.
Okay, so we, we have a call for a consensus to add Councilman Hugo's agenda item as well? Councilman Moody, sir, you have the floor. You, you still on, on, on the button. All right, thank you, sir. Okay. Next, next, next item on the agenda, Mr. Carter, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the discussion and the contribution to our retirees. I think they're gonna really appreciate what you guys have done. Next item is Operation Ceasefire. Ms. Onyx Hicks from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office is gonna make this presentation. Ms. Hicks?
Thank you, thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm here to give you guys a high-level overview of the Operation Ceasefire. As you see here, it's the local prosecutorial resources addition. We understand that there was a little bit of confusion between ceasefire as it pertained to the office of the prosecution and the police officers, so I'm here to clear that up for you today. So the purpose of this particular grant is to support the implementa, implement, implementation of strategies that will result in reducing violent crimes within, in the Commonwealth and the city of Portsmouth through prosecution, enforcement efforts, while implementing effective, sustainable solutions to intercept and eliminate local cycles of violence, excuse me. And the focus is very simple. Unlike the other, the one that's for the police officers, this particular grant is solely for Commonwealth attorneys' offices, and it's only to address local prevention, intervention, and enforcement through prosecution efforts. We have a list of potential uses that we can have, but we gave you some examples here because it's non-exclusive. So we can use these resources for investigation support, prosecution support, equipment supplies, and training, and I'll break these areas down for you a little further on the next slide. With the investigation support, it's specifically for personnel to support violent crime investigations and crime analysis. So wherever we see that need in the office, in the Commonwealth Attorney Office, then we're able to use these particular funds to hire additional personnel to help out in that area. Prosecution support, with these funds, we're able to do things like hire full or part-time prosecutors dedicated to prosecuting violent crimes and weapon offenses. We're also able to hire full-time or part-time case managers or paralegals dedicated to cases arising as a result of violent crimes and weapon offenses. Again, we're able to use it for things like equipment and supplies. We're able to use these funds to enhance our technological equipment, to make sure that we are always up and on the forthcoming of technology so that we can do what it is that we need to do. Most importantly, training support. One of the things that we can use this for is crime scene training for prosecutors, legal support for training for law enforcement officers as related to the prosecution and investigation of violent crime and weapons offenses. That's very important, because as we continue to become one to address the violence in the city, it's important that both sides understand how each other work and what they can do to make our cases much more stronger when we do go to court. There are some restrictions, but the restrictions are more for you guys than us. Grant funds cannot be used to replace state or local funds that would otherwise be available for the same purposes, meaning that although we've received these grant funds, a locality can't say, well, you have funds that are gonna help you fight violence in this way, so we're no longer gonna fund you. These funds are solely to increase our funding so that we can continue to do the things that we need to do to fight crime and prosecute effectively. We do have allowable costs. Requested funds must be utilized to prevent and reduce violent crimes, allowable projects and purchase includes, but are not limited to hiring additional personnel, overtime, supplies, training, travel expenses, and equipment necessary items that are related to violence reduction. Things we can't use the funds for is we can't use the funds for construction or renovation, land acquisition, lobbying and political contributions, bonuses, or alcohol. I don't think we was gonna do that anyway. And that's pretty much the gist of Operation Ceasefire from the prosecutorial standpoint. What questions do you have?
Councilman Hugo, you have the floor, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, thanks for the brief. How long have you all been receiving Operation Ceasefire funding?
It began January of 2024, and it ends in 2026.
And, and this is state funding, I guess?
This is state funding.
And is there some reporting requirement where the funding is tied to a reduction in backlog, or, or what's the measure of success, I guess, is the question?
That is an excellent question, and that is something that we're currently working on very closely with them to find out their specific needs and how we need to report that back to them, because this is a fairly new initiative for the state. I believe it's the first time that they've done something of this magnitude for Commonwealth attorneys across the state.
And they didn't tell you what they wanted as an outcome?
It's very unclear. It has not been clear as to what type of reporting that they require.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, Ms. Onyx, for the presentation. I guess my question, or maybe something that was a myth, or something that, you know, maybe we thought as a community, that some of this Operation Ceasefire funding, state funding, could be used for the robust violence interruptors, so I don't know how that transfers or not, is that on the restricted list?
So that may be where some of the difference came into it, because the police department also did receive ceasefire funding, and they have different rules and regulations that they can do for theirs. Ours specifically has to do with us getting resources for the prosecution, so we don't have the ability to use it on, in that way, on our side, but that may be something that they can use in the police department.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Hicks, can you explain to me, because I know you know the answer, I, I've been hearing about funds being requested for victim witness programs and support of victims. Can any of these dollars be used for victim witness, or is that a separate allocation altogether?
That is a separate allocation altogether.
Okay. And did, did you all receive some state funding for victim witnesses as well, or not?
I don't have the answer to that question. I will have to get our finance person on that. I do believe so, but I can't definitively answer that today. But I can give you that answer.
Yes, if you could find, because I know we get people to come and speak to us at council, and they refer to the victim witness program-
Absolutely.
-as if it's under the city's auspices, and we, we would just like to have some more information. I know our manager might wanna have some information, he probably already has it.
Yeah.
But for council, it's good for us to be in the know of.
Absolutely, I'll get that information over to you.
Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, you have the floor, ma'am.
Yes, Ms. Onyx, because this might be a report back or something that you may have to get to us later, or mayor asked about the victim witness program, but there's also something that's called witness protection, so those are two separate programs to help victims and witnesses.
I believe that will fall under our victim witness program, but I will get the clarification for you, yes.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
Manager Carter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks. We have one more presentation this evening. This will be from the Workforce Council. Mr. Avery is here, along with his colleague, to make this presentation for us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, this is Vice Mayor, members of council, city manager. Appreciate you having us here tonight. My name is Sean Avery, I'm with the Hampton Roads Workforce Council. We are the regional organization that's responsible for making sure we've got talent in the region to be successful, and we do a lot of work on behalf of the city of Portsmouth, and very happy with, with our partnership with the city of Norfolk for many, many years. What did I say? What did I say? Norfolk, I'm sorry. Portsmouth, I'm looking out the window the wrong way, with Portsmouth, sorry about that. Really appreciate all your support over the years. Really what we want to talk to you today is about the programs that we've been working around to support the youth in the city of Portsmouth. I've got my colleague here. Did I say Norfolk again?
No.
Okay, good. It's been a long day. So just, I'm gonna give you a quick overview of the Workforce Council, and then I'm really gonna turn it over to Christina, and she's gonna give you kind of a rundown on our projects we've been working on. We set up this youth program probably about six years ago. The mayor was part of that, Vice Mayor was part of that in the beginning, Mark Hugo's been a big supporter of it since then, Vernon, most of the city council has been a big supporter of it, so. But really, our job is to make sure we have the, the workforce in the region be successful, and we really do that across a number of, of different areas. We do that working with the individual to try to get them the career guidance that they need, to get them the skills that they need, to connect them with the opportunities that are in the community. We work with our veterans and transition and service members to make sure that they are staying with our region, staying in our region. The spouses, as they're, they're coming to town with their, their significant other, we're connecting them with the resources they need to be successful. We're doing a lot with our business community to help to grow the talent that they need. But the one that really is exciting in all the things that we do is around the emerging workforce. It's around our future, it's around our children, and getting them to stay in our region, to be connected with the workforce. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to Christina Brooks, who is the brainchild of this program, and really move, move it forward. I'll make sure she says the right city, too, so.
I'll give you that back. I'm shorter than him, so bear with me while I attempt to access a microphone. So as Sean said, I'm gonna talk about the Next Gen program here in Portsmouth. I'm not going to read all of the slides, go into all the details, I know that you have copies of it. For those in the audience, I did see that they're pronounced by the door, so please do grab one if you would like to be able to reference this information later. To understand how the Next Gen internship program is operating in Portsmouth, it's important to see how the full comprehensive Next Gen program is implemented within Portsmouth. So I'm gonna talk very briefly about what it looks like from a comprehensive perspective. Our program is a combination of middle and high school supports, as well as college supports and disconnected adults. Those are 16 to 24-year-olds that have not yet connected to something post-school, whether that's employment or further education. We focus this along three dominant categories of how we deliver programming, whether it's through engagement with our community, through internships, or through major events that allow access and encourage exploration into the opportunities that await our young people here in Portsmouth, as well as other parts of Hampton Roads. We focus a great deal on helping our young people develop career pathway plans and take the first step along those plans. Here in Portsmouth, we have a very strong partnership with Portsmouth Public Schools, where we are able to raise additional resources and help develop new programs that provide credentialing opportunities and other educational opportunities to students. For example, we have helped raise well over $200,000 through the Claude Moore Charitable Foundation to establish a patient care, patient care tech program here in Portsmouth that will allow students to get that next step credential. I just met with our CTE team, so we can discuss Nurse Aide II, and what that will look like as we continue to explore those resources. We also have secured an additional $147,000 that are currently allocated to expand Go Tech here in Portsmouth. We're working with Starbase Victory and Portsmouth CTE on what that implementation can look like here in the city. We partner with the city's Youth Build Program. Every week, we are there to help provide leadership and soft skills education to youth, and help expose them to what those opportunities are. We also coordinate a wide array of opportunities, such as field trips to visit the local employers, field trips to visit local post-secondary education, and bringing guest speakers into classrooms so students can develop these pathway plans. We focus on career immersion as well, where we want them to get a moment in the We focus on career immersion as well, where we want them to get a moment in the life of the activities. Some of our partnerships with Portsmouth have included Wind Energy Rocks, where we took students from all three high schools in Portsmouth to tour the Portsmouth Marine Terminal and visit the offshore wind training programs that are available to them. We also did a special cohort of girls for Girls Lead Offshore Wind, where they were able to tour the Port of Virginia. They toured two different training programs, one at Centura College and one at Old Dominion University, and they networked with the women of offshore wind, who are female leaders that are paving the way in that industry. We also pay for transportation for Portsmouth Public School students to attend the Career Immersion Expo that is hosted in Chesapeake, to ensure that they are also able to attend and participate in this immersive opportunity. We partner with Portsmouth Economic Development to ensure that there is Portsmouth representation of businesses, in addition to the Portsmouth representation of students at this event. Let's see. We help coordinate hiring opportunities for the students here in the city, whether it's through our Regional Opportunity Fair, where we bring about 100 employers to network with teens and young adults. We also partner with the school system and Portsmouth at Work. We have a very strong partnership with Portsmouth Economic Development on an event called Hire Our Grads, where we bring employers in to meet with graduating students in the fall and spring semesters. They're able to interview them for employment, make offers prior to graduation, and then we celebrate with a signing day. We also have partnered with Economic Development on the Portsmouth Connect Fest, where we're handing out school supplies for children for the next school year and connecting our residents to employment opportunities. And the last big approach that we take to bolstering the employment and career exploration ecosystem before we get to work-based learning is providing the necessary supports to our adults, who are that first point of contact to help youth explore their futures, whether they are guidance counselors, career coaches, football coaches, or a concerned parent down the street. We take them on behind-the-scenes tours of local industry, where they can see firsthand what the opportunities are, and interview the HR teams directly, so that they can give that information back to their classrooms, their faith-based institutions, their community centers, and their homes. We also partner with an array of organizations to host CTE forums, where we bring experts together to help educate and bolster the CTE pipeline and pathways for Portsmouth and beyond. The internship program is, as Sean said, it is the youngest of the programs within the Next Gen Campus 757 space. It was founded in 2018 in partnership with the Portsmouth Partnership here in the city. It serves ages 16 to 24. You will see that there's an asterisk beside that, because whenever funds are available and placement sites are available on a case-by-case basis, we will enroll 14- and 15-year-olds. Again, it's all about getting that worker's permit and finding a placement site that's able to take them between that 14- and 15-year range. They're able to earn up to $2,700 for 180 hours of internship experience. They go through an application process, where they tell us more about what they're interested in, and then we work to pair them with employers that are within that interest space, whether that is in healthcare, robotics, early childhood education. If it's an industry out there, odds are, we have an intern that's exploring it, and if we don't yet, we want to, so that we can expose them to those pathways. We do give priority of access to youth who have one or more of the barriers that are listed on this screen and listed in the handouts that you have, and I have some data for you, so you can see what that looks like. And these are pictures of Portsmouth students through the years. You'll also see where the age can vary. Again, it's all based on funding, opportunities, from a program that's been around for a few years now. As I mentioned, our students are doing a wide array of things. This is Ms. Hannah Page, who, while she was in high school, was interested in learning more about healthcare, and we were able to place her at the ODU Biotechnical Research Facility in Norfolk, where we transported her several days a week, and she was able to learn more about the brain probe that is currently studying Alzheimer's. We also have a very robust partnership over with Paradise Creek, where we place interns every year, who in addition to learning about conservation landscaping and engineering, are able to receive their Chesapeake Bay landscape credential. I've lost our screen, and that's okay, so I'm just going to flip ahead in my paper. Thank you, Mr. Avery. I always say I need the kids here to help me whenever technology doesn't behave. This program is funded, by the way, through private foundations, the business community, as well as individual donors. There's a lot of support from many different places that bolster opportunities for our Portsmouth children.
Including the city of Portsmouth.
Including the city, which we thank you.
But I think it's important, what Christina was trying to say, it's really a graded funding stream to help put this program together, because as you can see, the funding, while it's great to get from the city of Portsmouth, would not be able to do all the programming that's available through this program for the city. We're able to bring in additional resources, federal dollars, state dollars, private sector dollars, which really allows us to do a lot of out-of-the-box-type activities that some of our restricted funding do not allow us to do. So industry has really invested in this program, and we're very happy for that.
So since 2018, 119 Portsmouth youth have gone through this program. I think it's important to note, because I do know that there are concerns about Portsmouth funding for Portsmouth students. The way that this program is structured is that there is a restricted fund. If money is earmarked for Portsmouth students, it can only be used for Portsmouth students. Absolutely no charge, no cost can go against that fund if it is not in support of a Portsmouth intern in this program. It's an ironclad fund.
And it does not pay for salaries for the organization, doesn't pay any of our overhead costs. That's all comes out of those other funding that I mentioned.
Yep. So again, since 2018, 119 youth have come through this program. Seventy-six percent of them have disclosed barriers on the application. We say disclosed on the application because, again, this is an open access program that all youth are eligible to apply to, and we give priority of access to youth who disclose those barriers. That's important, because sometimes youth may not apply to a program that requires strict application, and we want to be a place that welcomes every youth who's interested in an opportunity. So again, 76% have disclosed barriers on their application, and by far, the most commonly disclosed barrier is being eligible for free or reduced lunch, which is a poverty indicator. That's 74% of applicants since 2018. Through our follow-up, where we check on them and see how they're doing, 98% of interns who had the goal of staying in school and moving on to the next grade level did so. 88% of interns who had a goal of obtaining unsubsidized employment upon completion of their education did so. And 89% of interns who had the goal of entering post-secondary education did so. We pulled a little bit of where are they now for you, so you can get an update on where some of our alum are and what they've been up to. Again, I won't read all of them, but as you can see, we have alumni who have completed their bachelor's degrees now. We have alumni serving in the United States Marine Corps. We have alumni serving as managers in the retail space, and we have students who are still continuing on with their education and receiving supports from their dedicated career coach. I did not mention that in this program, they receive robust supportive services. That includes site-to-site transportation to ensure access to their internships, and that they are not geolocked, which means they cannot be placed any further than they're able to transport from their neighborhood. So we're able to transport site-to-site. We buy any tools, equipment that they may need. If they need any type of certification in order to qualify, if that's within the budget, we're able to provide that. And they also receive a one-hour-a-week of dedicated career coaching that is theirs for the rest of their lives. They can always come back to Next Gen, and we do have interns that will come back to us year after year and say, I'm applying for college, will you help me? I'm applying for financial aid, will you help me? And you can see here where we have students who graduated in 2013 are still working with their career coaches today. I also will not read all of this. These are a few testimonials from Portsmouth students who have been through our program. They are included on the slides that you have. These are two young men that have been through two different types of placement sites. They are now working in cybersecurity, and they are just flourishing in their site. They're currently over at Semis. For this year's cohort, we currently have 23 interns. Two of them are profiled here on the left, over at the Community Outreach Coalition, and they are having a great time. We also have, of the 23 who are active, 91% disclosed barriers on their application. 90% were free or reduced lunch. We do still have 12 to 15 positions available. Our program is year-round, so we intentionally make sure that there are opportunities for students in the fall and spring semesters. Sometimes in the summer, students are still going to school, they're playing a sport, they may have caregiving responsibilities for a younger sibling, and being able to do their internships in the fall and spring helps with access to those opportunities. So we ensure that there is that access each semester of the year. And these are some examples of where our students are currently placed. When students graduate from Next Gen, they have many places that they can go. One of those is our robust college program called Campus 757. This is Mr. Christopher Baker, who started with us as a high school student. We helped him through his internship. He is now over at William &amp; Mary, getting his bachelor's degree. He just completed another internship where he did social media marketing. That's a blog that he wrote over for Proof Please about the dangers of AI. We also host professional development series for our college students, and this October, we are debuting a new two-day conference. It is 2757 Life and Career, where our college students will be given a firsthand glimpse into the unwritten rules of breaking into the workplace, how to navigate the costs of adult life, so the where to live, the how to get there, and those pieces, taxes, as well as embracing the arts and culture of our community. We also have alumni that move on to a wide array of other opportunities at the Workforce Council, such as our Navy funding, that I believe Sean will talk about in a moment, where we're able to pay for them to get their welding credentials and go to work within shipbuilding and repair, or they may go into our healthcare training. That's about 25% of what we do. So they have a lot of places they can go when they're done. And again, I won't read this whole thing, but this is another testimonial from a student that's been through this program. She was struggling with felony on her record. Thanks to the internship program, she not only was able to get her first work experience, but she has now launched her own business as a result of it and landed her first client. So.
The last piece I will just add is, while we're talking about this specific population range, we can help after this. As they come back, like Christina mentioned, we've got a number of new programs, apprenticeship programs, or so. Somebody comes out of this program, we can put them right into our apprenticeship program. If they're interested in going into the maritime training program, we can pay for them to go to the Skilled Trades Center right at TCC, which we're helping to fund an expansion of that program. So there's just a lot of opportunities, and working with youth, as I'm sure those that are parents know, each youth is very different, and it takes a lot of working with those individuals. You've got to be able to work with them and understand what their needs are. It can't just be a cookie-cutter program, and that's really what the team does, and they do a great job at that. But love to take questions from anybody on the dais.
Well, we do have a few, and so our first question will come from our vice mayor. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Avery, Ms. Brooks. I appreciate this presentation. It's very informative. A couple of questions I have. One, I think you answered the question. I was wondering, how long does the career coach, you know, follow the cohort? And you say for a lifetime. That's amazing how you're able to continue that. So that's answered in the presentation. Question is, how are the students recruited for participation?
We have robust partnerships throughout the city. We go and visit all of the public schools. We partner with a lot of the nonprofits, such as communities and schools, the Boys and Girls Club. We offer programming within those facilities as well. We also will go to spaces where youth frequent, just so that we can hand out information. We attend every single community event that we catch word of, like the Connect Fest, so that we can get the word out there. And again, we host these regional educator events, so that we can help inform those frontline adults that are also helping youth, so that they know about the program. And now that the program's been established for a while, it's not uncommon that we have younger siblings, cousins, and family friends that are knocking on the door, and sometimes we get them as young as 12, asking if it's their turn yet, and they stay in touch with us, and when they turn 14, they're like, is there any way? So really, any way you can think of, we're out there trying to get the word out for our youth.
That's great.
The coolest ones are when we have, the coolest ones are when we have parents who are in one of our other programs, they bring their children to, and we put them in the programs, and we have like the whole family as part of the effort, supporting each other. It's really cool.
Sometimes the kids bring their parents.
That's good stuff. And then my last question, I guess, maybe, is why would the barriers listed on the application if they're not going to be used to restrict people from applying?
Again, it's because we give priority to them. So what that means is if we receive 40 applications and we only have 30 slots, and we have 30 youth that have those priority barriers, then they will receive priority of access to the program. That does not mean that other youth cannot apply, and we continue to raise money and resources and create positions for it. We just want to make sure that we are prioritizing the youth that have the greatest needs and those barriers that are preventing them from being able to access employment.
Good. Thank you.
Councilman Barnes, sir, you have the floor.
Just to clarify something, my concern isn't whether it goes to Portsmouth kids. My concern is that the city, when we have our retirees coming asking for money, and they work for our city, and they invest in our city, my concern is us investing into different organizations for something that we can do ourselves as a city. So that's the clarification of my concern. I just wanted to make sure I got that out the way. I know we have 30 slots for your program. Is it any reason why we didn't fill those spots?
Again, we have positions that we've held open for the fall and spring for students that have that access barrier for summer. So those 30 slots will be filled between now and the end of the fiscal year. Our fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. So we have the first, the largest of the cohort is that summer, and then we have students that will continue in the fall, or they will start in the fall, students that will continue in the spring, or start in the spring.
What was the budget for this intern program?
So every year, the budget is going to range between about $150,000 to $250,000, based on the number of slots and the resources that we have that come in.
So I know you said that you work with Portsmouth Public Schools. Just a two-part question. I know, I'm asking, do they invest into this, give some money towards this program? Also, what other cities are investing into this program?
So with Portsmouth Public Schools, they are not investing financially. They do invest their time and their staff. So what that means is we work very closely with the work-based learning coordinator on the recruitment and placements of students. We also will help with referrals into the different programs in Portsmouth Public Schools, and when their slots are full, they refer students to us. When our slots are full, we refer students to them. So it's more of a collaboration than a mutual funding, if that makes sense. And then as far as the other cities that are investing in this current fiscal year, the only other locality that is paying for their cohort, and again, these are ironclad cohorts, which mean Portsmouth money, Portsmouth students, Hampton money, Hampton students, would be the city of Hampton has dedicated funds for their students, and it's specifically through the school system.
Okay. And now, I hear, and I've read it as well, that you guys provide transportation and childcare. What must one do to get those services? I ask because one of the pitches that you guys had of one of the places that your kids work, they were talking about how they had children, well, specifically one child who needed childcare and transportation, and they weren't able to get that. So my question is that how do they reach out to you guys about getting that services? Because they've said that they've reached out, and they haven't been able to get that service. So I told them that I would mention that in the meeting to see what they had to do.
Definitely tell their career coach that they have a need, but also, my cell phone number is the number that's listed in this PowerPoint, and they can literally text me directly, identify who they are and where they're placed, so that I know what the need is, and I will follow up on that directly. And if they're not able to reach me, they can reach Joshua Sheffield, who is the program coordinator, and he's in my office every single day with supportive service requests. So that is something that can be addressed immediately.
And that's, it's the community outreach.
Okay.
And that's the other thing that I was going to mention about the career coach. They said that from their understanding, they were supposed to be provided a career coach.
They have been.
But they've been reaching out, and they haven't been provided that career coach for those.
Their career coach has been meeting with their, have them contact me directly, and I'll have, I'll follow up on that, because I do know that their career coach has been meeting with their intern that's placed there. I did misspeak when I said two. We have one intern there, and the other two are from the Portsmouth Public Schools program.
Oh, they said they have, they said they have two.
I will follow up on that.
Yeah, yeah.
I will be happy to follow up on that.
I think that's important. If you have any issues, yeah, just send them to Christina and I, and we will jump in there. And if you also have students that are interested that you know, please send them our way, or work sites that are interested in getting involved, send them our way as well.
Well, speaking of that, when our program filled up, I did have about 10 kids who did apply for the program. None of them got any calls back, callbacks. So that's why I asked about filling the, why didn't you get the 30 that was allocated? Because I had a lot of people reach out to me and inbox me, so I would send them that link, but none of them actually got them.
Have them definitely reach out to me, so I can also double-check which link that they were filling out, just to make sure that it did come to us, and I will follow up with our program coordinators as well, and just make sure that follow-up communication has been done. Okay?
I know, it was the one Hugel, Mark Hugel, sent to me was the one that I sent to them.
We'll definitely follow up. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention, definitely. We'll definitely follow up. We appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Hugo, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And this is one additional follow-up to Councilman Barnes' question. First, thanks for being here, Mr. Avery, Ms. Brooks. You guys doing great work. Follow-up to his question, on the Portsmouth by the Number slide, what portion, can you estimate for us what portion of the budget is paid for by the money that we send you and what portion of the budget is funds that you all raise with your engagement with industry?
Great question. You provide us about $50,000 per year on that project. As Christina mentioned, it's about $200,000. So for every dollar you put in, we match it by about three additional dollars that helps support.
Can you please go to the microphone?
Can you please go to the microphone because we're missing you.
Could you repeat that?
Yes, absolutely. So basically, you provide $50,000 per year to support the program and for every dollar that you provide, we provide additional $3 in funding or staff support activity. So it's about a one to three return on investment.
Perfect. Thank you. So I will publicly thank you guys for the engagement with Portsmouth Public Schools. I know Christina has attended our Career Technical Education Advisor Committee, the lash-up between you all and our CTE group, getting our kids to career fairs, getting them connected with industry with a shot at getting hired into careers right after high school. You all have the connections and so that's been a huge benefit and opportunity for our CTE program. Additionally, I know you guys are lashed up closely with Ms. Saleh at Portsmouth at Work. There's an event coming up in South Side, I think later on this week, that you all are involved in, hiring event. And so again, the lash-up between you and our Portsmouth at Work crowd is critically important because we at Portsmouth at Work have some reach, you have more reach, and so that one plus one equals three thing is definitely at work and I appreciate that. So I'll make a shameless plug for the needs of the Navy now. There was an article in the paper just this week about the Navy shipbuilding kind of being in a really bad position and it's primarily because we can't find enough tradespeople to do all the shipbuilding work that needs to be done. The Navy has tagged you guys as the point team here in Hampton Roads to be their advocate and the dole out of the opportunities to step into workforce development for shipbuilding trades. I wonder if you would, could maybe spend just a couple of minutes talking about that piece because, you know, I'm just a dumb old shipyard guy. I walk around town telling people the shipyard is hiring. It's my, that's my favorite shipyard, but the truth is, every shipyard and all of the suppliers to the shipyards are hiring right now. They're tired of hearing it from me. You all are much closer to the direct contact with the Navy. And so Sean, if you could talk to that, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. As Councilman Hugo was mentioning, we're in a, we're in a pretty big deficit when it comes to the workforce for the maritime industrial base, the defense industrial base. We're gonna need about 40,000 individuals over the next five, six years within the maritime industry to meet the needs of our Navy. And it's not just across the country. I'm talking about right here in Hampton Roads. With everything you see on the water, Norfolk Naval behind us, Newport Shipbuilding down the road, the supply chain that are out there, we've got to build our workforce. And not that anybody dropped the ball or anything like that. I think it's just as the Cold War ended, our defense industrial base kind of went away and so the workforce went away. And now we're having to ramp back up with the other things that are going on in the world with China, with the things we're doing in partnership with Australia and England now. We need to really start to ramp up our industrial base. So to do that, we have to ramp up our workforce. And so the Navy, through the submarine industrial base, has been making extreme strategic investments in three areas: workforce development, supply chain and technology. Hampton Roads is set to meet all three of those needs. The Hampton Roads Alliance is working to recruit new businesses in the area. And what we're doing as the Hampton Roads Workforce Council is, we're receiving funding from not only the Navy, from the Department of Commerce, at the US, the US Department of Commerce, the US Department of Navy, Department of Labor, the Commonwealth of Virginia through the General Assembly, to really bring together brave funding to really meet that needs. I'm just gonna name a few projects that we're doing. We are building new training facilities in Hampton Roads to start to increase the training capacity. Pauli Camps building a new facility in Suffolk. Virginia Peninsula Community College is building a new facility in Newport News, downtown Newport News. TCC is on this year's list to expand their Skilled Trades Center right up the road, basically gonna double that.
In Portsmouth.
In Portsmouth. And some of the schools are expanding their capacity and that's gonna really raise the workforce that we need. I'm just gonna give you a couple of real stats. I know you've got a quick meeting. It will take us eight years if we don't do anything to produce what we need in one year's worth of coatings. It will take us two years to produce what we need in the amount of welders, what we need in one year. We've got to increase the capacity across the board. And so that's what we're doing. But it starts in the school divisions. Like Christina mentioned, we're putting GO Tech throughout the region. So Portsmouth had already had GO Tech. We're expanding that effort. We're doing school-based programming, where we're doing crew exploration around the maritime industry. We're working with our veterans community to get them to understand the opportunity, doing skill bridge programs. So it's really across the board. We launched a $2.5 million marketing campaign that you may have seen. It's called the Regional Maritime Training System. And we're expanding our footprint from just the 15 cities and counties to basically 100-mile radius of right here in the water, right here, to make sure that we're starting to bring individuals into this community to meet this needs. It's a national defense imperative that we get this right and we are the focal point of it here in Hampton Roads. And I appreciate Councilman Hugo mentioning that. We are kind of heading that workforce component up right now. So.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for sharing those details. So to your point, we stood up GO Tech classrooms. So GO Tech is the advanced manufacturing curriculum, kind of tied to the maritime industry. We stood up GO Tech classrooms in all three of our middle schools this past school year. And we're gonna go gangbusters this coming school year to get kids into those classrooms and get them excited about a career in the maritime field somewhere. The mayor mentioned during State of the City that we're tied to the blue economy, blue meaning the maritime world. We are a blue city and so we, and right, sitting right here in the middle of Hampton Roads, we want to be the workforce developers of, known across the country as the place to come to get workforce development in this field. And so our ability to do that is directly tied to the work that you all are doing. And so I appreciate the partnership that we enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. And I have two questions. I will first, one question and a comment. First of all, what are we doing as the Workforce Council to meet the needs of our special needs students and our special needs community? Do we have a component in place for that?
So our programs are open to, of course, all youth and we partner with the school systems in whatever way that we are asked to partner. Having a differing ability is one of the priorities that are given access within the program. So it's really just however we can help that we're asked to, then we're able to do that.
Very good. And so I do want to make a comment. I can remember about six years ago, a young lady came to me and said, "We want to do a program here." And what many don't know in this room, the Next Gen program was started through a community effort. And it was everyone in the community. It was the business community, it was the churches, it was the schools, it was the grassroots folks who put in the money, who put in the initial money. I remember you, Christina, walking around the church and community in action, the Rotary Clubs, and you were raising money to start this program. And we were fortunate to get help from the Beasley Foundation and look at us today. The Next Gen program, I've heard so many amazing stories about how our young people are growing and just getting confidence and you are providing hope and opportunity for their futures. And might I add, I remember the one story about the young man who went to work over one of our ship repair companies. And he had a tough background, but he was able to overcome that tough background with the felony conviction, go back and get his life together and become a valued employee and was ultimately hired by that company. Is that correct?
Yes.
So you got a lot of stories. You guys are doing a lot of great work. I believe in the program. I hope my colleagues can understand that there are many ways to get to the goal, but certainly Workforce Council is a very proven way. And I hope that we can fund it a little bit better. Because my last question is, if you had the $200,000, it would help you have more children. Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. And I will turn it over now to the city attorney. She has a question.
They don't always let me speak in this, but this is very important because one of our council members mentioned GO Tech. As a parent of a special needs child, I can't emphasize how important it is to provide the legally required accommodations for special needs children. Do not underestimate that that population. There are a lot of able, and I love the way you defined it as differently abled, children who would serve valiantly in these positions, who need this attention, who need the same support as you're providing to other students. And if you are collaborating with our public school, then you know that that is a large population, that their program is robust. And I encourage you to hire those counselors who have the ability to work with those children, the same way they do with the able kids. And also dedicate staff to work with the school to look for these childrens who are hiding in the shadows, who have these abilities, just need an opportunity. And you will see it flourish and we will be the blue city that includes everyone, all students. I look forward to it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And thank you for that, Madam City Attorney. And thank you, Sean, and thank you, Christina. You guys continue to keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you, everybody.
Mr. Manager, sir, you have the floor.
Thank you to all the presenters tonight. Mayor, council, that concludes the presentations I have scheduled for you this evening. Give it back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Council liaison reports at this time. Do we have any? Seeing none, I believe we do have a need for a closed session. So Madam Vice Mayor, if you would please read the closed session motion.
Do you have one?
I saw a mention.
Everybody's looking.
Thank you. I move to go into a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A8 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding collective bargaining and the Southeastern Public Service Authority. And B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A1 for the purpose of discussing appointments to boards and commissions.
We have a motion in a second. Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 5-0.
We are now in closed session.
I hear a move that each council member certify that to the best of his or her knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed or considered in the closed meeting just concluded.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have a second? Would you please vote electronically?
This item is adopted 5-0.
Thank you. That concludes our closed meeting and that concludes our public work session. We will reconvene at 7 o'clock PM.